Try to put that.
You're so.
I think.
Oh, you.
I didn't.
I love.
So we're back to my.
Good night.
Take away.
He's.
He's.
Yeah.
It's not much.
No, maybe.
They're trying to.
Max.
They get with me.
There's no rest.
Any insurance?
I'm.
I can't.
I see.
I see.
Exactly.
Well, I think a lot of them take.
That.
Was such a.
Thank you.
Yes.
It's.
Yeah.
Uh.
Yeah.
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 So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
Sure.
I feel like you'll think.
I'm definitely.
But you'll have.
I guess.
I guess.
Yeah.
I think.
That's.
We're starting.
Very.
What's the.
I see you, boy.
Mr. 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 My Lord. Um, we saw also in the leaders in a day.
But.
I don't know.
That's.
Man, but it's.
For then.
Down south.
So.
So geez, that's his town.
That it grows way too long.
Yes.
Uh, this.
Well, I do kind of miss you.
I can.
Come.
Oh, geez, I just want to thank you.
One more.
Okay.
Be a gentleman.
Please.
Pleasure.
We could.
To be glad.
The United States of America.
Into the recovery.
Which is saying.
One nation.
Another God.
Is it difficult?
Believe your team.
Just.
Let her off.
Right.
Now, for.
Yeah.
Well.
Grace us with the.
Uh.
Mission.
Mission statement.
Yes, sir. To answer frame of our success through bounds governance, dynamic partnerships and engaged community.
Mr. Ray, if you would do likewise with the mission statement.
Southern city mission statement. Southern city is safe, prosperous and vibrant. And. Where diversity, donations and education from success in a glorified competitive society.
Thank you most. Are there adjustments to the agenda?
Those are. Make a motion when you approve the agenda.
So. This is a move. Second, then we approve the general and better that be on my side about.
Yeah.
All opposed have the same right here in motion, Gary.
Make a motion to approve the consent.
Thank you. It's been moved to promise second that we approve the consent agenda. All the people that be on my side about. All opposed have the same right here in none. Motion carried, public hearing.
It's.
Like a house.
No.
Public.
Second.
It's been moving promises and then we open the public hearing has anyone to sign up? On the paper about sign, maybe not my side about.
Done.
On the side right. Motion carry.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. So well, the case that we have for you tonight, this case part two five dash zero seven zero one is a proposed general reason. Next slide. The applicant and owner of March of Friday is twice the general region of property consisting of one parcel and one point five acres. From agricultural residential to highway. The underdressed property situated along kind of growth, church road. Is currently in solid city ETJ as identified by party's parcel number eight seven three three two by town county land destructions. Next slide. Not too much on the record as the history of the property currently being and has been since it was created in two thousand and eight. It came under the ownership of this Friday in October two thousand and twenty four. Now, she's looking at how to reown to help. Maybe a little bit more market. So. Next slide. Here's some aerial commentary of the site showing its current undeveloped. They. To the north, that flag lot directly north of it, that's address two fifty seven. Uh, that parcel was undeveloped as well. Also one of the children this Friday. The parcel to the south, one ninety five, that is the commercial property. And we think south of that is on highway commercial. Next slide. This is just some photographs from a tiny road church road property. Uh, that property just to the left, there is the one nine five property that's commercial property. Next slide. There's another any of it. And then next slide. This current zoning map, the property has agricultural residential to the north on both sides, finding very church road. And highway commercial and south on both sides as well. Uh, as we see, the property has a large parcel, uh, also to the west, uh, which is agricultural residential and also one developed. Excellent. Here's a future land use map. Uh, it's still pretty similar stories of zoning that. Uh, we have suburban land use destination right now in our land use plan. And that's all to the north as well. And then we have industrial employment also in the south. Excellent. This is a side by side summary comparison of the, uh, in agricultural residential and how we can like the district. This just provides some context of the dimensional regulations as well as the intended uses in general. Um, staff included more comprehensive list of these uses in your package as well. Excellent. Currently, the area has no waters who are available. Um. Part of any development property, they're going to have required an necessary improvement. That's either going to be tried or we're trying to count the environment. We'll know if and when we get the point with the problems. Excellent. So the property right now, uh, the proposed reason supports the goals and objectives to comprehensive plan, but it's inconsistent with the future land use map. The problem currently support the suburban designation, which doesn't quite fit with all the uses of the highway commercial district. Um, with this being a general reason, uh, where all the uses must be considered. Uh, staff recommends that the future land use map, uh, be amended to industrial employment. Um, that's to be in the line with all the highway marching uses and often more consistent with the other highway running districts in the area. Um, that amendment will happen automatically on first base action with the. Excellent. So to just give more illustrate point here, uh, this is just an overview of the suburban land of its destination. Um, the big thing here is that this designation is principally geared towards residential parks and playgrounds and very small scale, uh, commercial uses. It's a small scale commercial uses that don't really jive with the highway commercial. That's important. So on the other hand, next slide. On the other hands, the employment, the industrial employment destination does job on the use of highway district. And this is the land you study, that is more fitting for that. Um. And this designation is also more consistent with the character of the area and everything south of that parcel, like you see. Excellent. So just to summarize here, uh, the subject parts, which we have cross hatched in this map. Um, this is to show you how the nuclear land use maps would actually be amended. So basically the boundary of the industrial employment destination would just be extending one parcel to the north there. Excellent. Same for the zoning district. By the way, the market district will be expanding by one parcel in that area. It's already largely dominated, uh, going moving south, uh, by how we. Excellent. But considering the following staff recommended, we will oppose reasons. One, the proximity of the parcel to both highway commercial, uh, zoning and the industrial employment. Uh, land destination to the proximity of the parcel to U S twenty four twenty one and old U S four twenty one. Number three, the fact that the more intensive use of the highway commercial district do require conditional reason and special use permits or special use permits. The lot size also creates a passive return from large, more intense uses as well. Number four. The existence of the party directly towards the subject property that the black box. That serves as a, as a natural buffer between that and any other, uh, they are something just. So and then any commercial development of that site going forward is still going to require the necessary screening in our U K. And then lastly, any future development site for required on necessary. Excellent. Playing word review this, uh, the proposed reason at the regularly scheduled meeting on July four, he voted for three, uh, regular improvement. Not much came out of the way of conversation for this one. Um. Up to and during that meeting, there were no speakers and other support or opposition. We did receive one inquiry by phone asking about the attendance used to the property, but staff just explained to them, uh, that remains to be seen. Uh, we did refer to them to all the permitted and how we. Uh, and from that time, uh, within the allotted notification window all the way up to tonight, um, we actually did receive one of the phone calls today, but it was just another inquiry. So no other issues, no other concerns of them. I'll. Very good.
All right. Would this say, uh? Do motion. Thank you.
So it, it will be a one motion thing. So the, the land use plan will be automatically updated. Uh. Basically, the way staff is recommending is just with that industrial employment. It would, it's still could pay as suburban land use designation, but it's more fitting if we go ahead and just update or comprehend. It can be done either way, but we just think one.
One question too. Um, is the property owner here? Mercy.
So.
Yes.
Yes, she's here.
Uh, just want to say thank you for putting all this together. You obviously exercise a lot of due diligence with writing letters to the planning department. Thank you for doing that. Make your face extremely well. Thank you.
You have a question, Sarah.
So. I haven't. What was the reasoning this? That the great thing for my mid.
Yes.
There, there was one. It was just that it was, it wasn't really discussed. I think it's just, uh. Maybe their. Initial tape on it. It'd be, I honestly, I don't want to speak too much for them and assume, but. You might get.
Going forward, can we have more information in the agenda on the opinions from the members of the planning board? This is kind of a trend that we see a lot and we don't actually get a lot of feedback, but needs to be noted better.
Sure. So what, what I do is in our staff report, I have amended section under the planning board. And so basically we say this is why the planning board had it. This is what the vote was. And if there was any particular discussion either among the planning board or any questions by the planning board or the public, I noted in there. Uh, I'm happy to, and I noted in my presentation as well, but I'm happy to.
Well, I think what, Miss, um, Commissioner Hauser's trying to draw down to, and if it works, you know, they stopped me. But. If. Even with your worksheet. If they don't give a reason and it's a split, then. It would be helpful, I think, to go back and maybe poll them individually and say, why did you vote for or against? If it's a, if it's a. Six, one or five, two, that's different. But if it's a four, three split. I think it'd be nice to poll them to say. Why did you go for against? So we have that information.
Okay, it helps us make better decisions too. I think that, you know, be in their brain, understand their point of view. It would help us make better decisions for the town. Because otherwise, there's no point of the planning. We don't understand why they voted that way, then why we, why are they voting on things if they don't know how they got those.
Four, three, very, very close. As far as. I. I don't like to say a decision. Came with four, three.
Well, in, in their defense, we have made some of the same things here. So I mean, you know. And there's not a lot of any question about why you didn't vote one way or the other. And everybody's prerogative to vote the way they wish. And so, um. They voted for three. And we have had some close ones here, so. And I don't remember anybody giving this reason of any poll. But anyway, thank you.
Yes. You know, what? Thank you. Make a motion to.
Say. Second. That movie pop second above me here because all that be know about my sign about.
Uh.
All of us have decided right here in that. What you carry.
Make a motion to approve. Both the map. Emma. Resolving the property identified as. Eight, seven, three, thirty two. From agricultural residential. And with market. And number two, approve the following statement of consistency and reasonable. The zoning map amendment is, it is inconsistent. And. Map. However. The amendment will be consistent with the adopted land use plan and zoning for the surrounding area. The zoning map amendment is reasonable. And is in the public interest and will benefit the surrounding community by allowing small scale commercial uses. That support the area in accordance with the current land use. Uh, parcel would be subject to all provisions. But sorry, they unified the belt plan. Or, I'm sorry. Orders. This would include screening, traffic access, parking setbacks, height limitations and other criteria.
Second. It's been moved about a second, then we saw any approval that all is maybe like been on my side about. All of us have the same right. Here in that motion, Gary, thank you much. And again, thank you, man, for bringing us to the town to enhance what we already trying to do.
Thank you.
Yeah. Old business lab one, one, no coming to Main Street Downtown Association. And then.
All right, bye, Sarah. Just ready to mention on. For we all on the main street.
Sarah, good evening. Um, and I hope you all know the country by now. Our application for the Main Street program was accepted. On July second. By your city would be all. This was really huge collaborative effort. So I do want to take a moment just to publicly thank everyone that supported that process. Uh, and that, of course, includes Jack, who with so much foundation. Uh, that, uh, my supervisor, Tim Mack, who walked me through so much of it, uh, Chief Reagan and Dylan and our finance director. Uh, and also him who's not here. Uh, and. Most importantly, uh, Christie Brown and this Gadoo Board. She. I don't understand, but her foot.
You got it. We know. Just.
But also that, you know, the Chamber, the Merchants Association, the incubator and all the business owners and citizens who rallied up and did. It was, it was everyone who made this happen. And so very grateful for that. And just want to give you some updates. Uh, Main Street is coming for our public kickoff event. It will be September eighteenth, which is a Thursday. Uh, from. Two o'clock to two thirty. They would love to meet with town map and any elected officials, if you are available, that is the end of the vote from center. Uh, they will be meeting with this Gadoo Board from two thirty to three. And of course, anyone already present will to say for that. Uh, as well as do another downtown walkabout to meet with some of the business owners. Uh, and then our public meeting will happen in, uh, beginning at five thirty. Uh, for summer refreshments and the incubator in the big room there. Uh, and they will give a presentation about what it means to be a downtown associate community. What to expect and look forward to, what the next steps are, and time for questions afterwards. Uh, there should be in your packet, they sent the proposed to your schedule. Uh, what will happen? And we are downtown in the community and that will include, uh, reviewing the plans we've already adopted and how it implement those into our strategic plans. There's going to be a retail market announced and a vision for, um, they're going to walk us through making a first work plan and the budgeting process. Uh, so there is a lot to look forward to.
Right.
And any question?
Thank you very much. I will be up to now. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And yeah, two or five meetings in the incubator.
Uh, no, it feels like we need to be at the welcome center. The only thing at the incubator is the public meeting, which starts at five thirty.
Is the two P M. Meeting, is that better for the local officials or?
They.
Supposed to find.
They yes. First meeting invited the eleven officials to two to two thirty portion. That, of course, you're. Welcome to any.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And actually, before moving on, this is not really addressed to, uh, Sarah, the same. But we adopted this and looked at this. And now I'm understanding. That you want to consolidate a position. And eliminate a position. And I want to know how you came to that conclusion. Considering the fact. The board never said that. We started off. With community development coordinator. And a Main Street coordinator. So I want to know how we got to consolidating these two positions. Because this was firmly stated. That. The Main Street coordinator could only do Main Street. So my question is. All the good work that has been done by the community coordinator. Who's going to do it?
Uh, you don't want to move forward?
Yes.
What I'm saying, sharing. Spreadsheet, I guess, getting back to how we got to that point. Would be, um. And we're going through the budget process. And through the application process, we have. Didn't found it, um. We could. Um, propose it with a whole new position. Which would be keeping a clean bill player in place and creating a new position. But as we had a conversation amongst staff, me and John and Kimberly and Tim Mack, we started talking about. How to move forward with the budget. And so. It quickly determined that the things that the community development plan was doing. Uh, was mainly downtown. What majority of downtown work focused. The rest of it could be done by other staff. Uh, the planning director, the senior planner, and maybe even some folks from our administration office could help with some of the work. That was done by the, uh, community developer. And so when we presented the budget to the board. Um. In. March, April, May. That's how, that's how the budget was laid out. That it would. So we could plot for the position, I imply the building, application of Main Street. Then we just, we would just hold a position. We didn't create a new position in our budget.
Well, I hear on the board do that. And so while we was doing the budget, what was that made clear? Plus the fact. Uh. The planning department. Does not have time. To do what was being done with the community coordinator. So you're still not explaining how we're going to cover that shortfall. And if we were going to eliminate a position. It shouldn't have been brought to the board before it was actually. Done. And we have nothing about it. And then I understand. You said it's that documentation where we said that's what we're going to do. So I'd like to see the documentation and that's what we said we'll come to do.
May I say something? Uh. When we, um, went over the budget, there was no line item for the downtown coordinator. Cause at that point when we budgeted, we didn't understand if we're going to be accepted. So Sarah Martin and other town staff, Jack Metta's. Decided to do a dual role temporarily with potentially hiring a person that was never explicitly said, it's like a hired coordinator. It was never documented. It was really just conversation we had here in the courtroom. Um, and it sounds like you guys have found a way to make it happen. Otherwise, I would be very hesitant to hire a full time person for this. It's a two year temporary program. And if we were to hire that person, that's. Ninety to a hundred thousand dollars, uh, for that salary, uh, only to essentially fire them two years later. So. If you're able to use your existing resources and you can do it effectively, I am all for that. It's just my opinion, but going back to what the mayor said, it was never explicitly said we're going to hire that person. It was always going to be a dual role.
No, it was never said to be a role. I want to see, if it was saying, I want to see the minutes, the notes that it was saying. Because that's not what was stated here.
Okay, that's, that's what I remember.
Uh, so if there, if we said it, it should be in the minutes.
Well, I'll be honest with you, I remember that one too.
Well, it should be in the minutes. I want to see it.
That's fine.
That's all I'm asking for is to show me where this board agreed to that.
It was mostly a conversation.
So if it was a conversation, it's not official.
I know, but it was not in the book.
Well, you know, at the end of the day. We all knew. That in order to have this program, we had to have a person dedicated to the Main Street. We did not go in this with blinders on. We also knew that we had already funded a community coordinator. Now, when the budget was presented for. The Main Street coordinator, it was in there, but she presented it. She bought that to the tape. I don't worry about else's that, but I'm here. But she said right there and made that presentation.
I don't remember that, so.
Well, I, we can bang that in the end, in the minutes.
It's like we have our community. Corn. Like Jackson moderator. The ladies show up to do the stuff. One of my employees will be there. Tarification would be needed. Interfere around me. Uh, I just remembered the other way, I'm sorry.
I, well, I'm not, I'm not saying what you don't remember. I'm sure what actually happened. And I'm just asking staff. When did the board make the decision? That we were not going to do it the way it was laid out? That's all I meant. And if we got the minutes. Then we're good. But if we don't have the minutes, then the board needs to be aware. Of what is being done and how it's being done. So it was absolutely clear. So can her presentation?
Can you get the minutes, number one? You know, the two, if we said we were going to do so, we should. But.
Exactly.
So we shouldn't, we shouldn't, uh.
But it's just right.
It says, um, the first meeting was in February, it said. The board asked John and Keith to crunch the numbers to share at the February meeting. And so that's what we did when we crushed the numbers. And so that was, that, that's what I said, that we had his internal conversations with them like staff. And then at the, the meeting where we approved it, this is what the board approved. Motion considered. Hiring in downtown to know the coordinator, it was made by Commissioner Brown and second, seconded by Commissioner House. He now said, prove. And that's what he worked with.
Okay. We considered to hire the downtown coordinator. And now you're telling me that we're going to eliminate the coordinator. For the Main Street program. I'm not trying to prolong, prolong this. But I know what the board say. And, and to come back with it, uh, we're just going to eliminate this all together in the one direction.
So, uh, I think what I'm getting at is we had decided that. We could make it work without creating a new position. Now of the budget, staff, the. Now, if the board thinks we need to hire another person, staff is our problem with it.
If you can show me how you're going to do the downtown, the, uh, community coordinator. Yes, it's. And I know you can't do it with the planning board. Yeah. So I already know that.
So I thought it was going to do. Yeah, I met with staff and that's what we've been working on. Before we, before we even took it to, uh, the, um. The board is a budget, I'm, that's what we did. So I've got, I'm like, hey, we're here to show you the task and duties for everybody. And so that's, that's, that's how we did it. We kept the, um. New development. It's about what if we. Did it without? And so it can be done, there's just a few things that need to be moved from the. Corner. It would be taken on by other planning staff and administrative staff. And so we, we have all of us internally worked this out so that we can make, make this work. If you got a way to decentralize the process. Yes. And I'll say this, one, one of the things is I see my goodness, why, uh, uh, was strong. A while ago was. Sarah has been doing the. Uh, I think on. The, um, we develop. That's been her love. The bulk of her work has been down. The, the majority of different markets. And so that's why it was easy to define those other things. And there's some things that. Um, that are here that are going to be in other places. For example, um. The C D G B, C D B G program. That is a program that's administered by an outside consultant. They have a grant to help them with that. Uh, the, uh, brown bill development program. We don't have a grant right now. They have a grant to help them do that. Uh, the uh, brown bill development program, we don't have a grant right now. That program's really slow. There's not a lot of blood. And so there are a number of things that are in that role that are not going to be as busy or. Because she had all her good effort in town downtown. Her most of her time is in that, and now it was still there. Now it was about what was his. And so, uh, Low Street Works, she had stewards. That's something that's going to stay in the planning department. Um, so it's, 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 it's more be keeping anyway rather than the excellent bill planner. And then uh, and the community advisory committee, administrative staff is going to handle that. And so we have worked that internally. Where are these things going to be?
Well, if you feel like that you are justified in what you're trying to do with this, uh. I don't have an issue with it, but I have watched this process and how it's. I I have firsthand knowledge. I'm here every day. And so I see how operations happen on downtown. And this downtown, the Main Street coordinator is very, very important to this town. So is the community development coordinator. So all I'm saying about these two positions is be sure. That the work is done. Be sure that the work is done, because we will be watching. It is, I stated, I'm here every day.
Maybe Jack, maybe we can um, get some updates as as time goes by with a new split. I think um, some of the hesitancy or retlessness, uh, maybe because. Splits in the past and reallocation of work.
Did not work.
Didn't work so well, like splitting the, um, work department that didn't work so well. Uh, a couple of our splits, uh, I understand, um, understand the the hesitancy and the concern. Also understand saving ninety. At the end of the day, um, I'm gonna say the same thing I've always said. If we say we're going to do something, we should do it, no matter what it is, this issue, any other issue. And uh, this, we gotta. We gotta push forward with Main Street. It's a big, it's a big deal for this town. Um, I don't think anybody disagrees with that, that it can be very beneficial. So let's just protect our Main Street program, please.
And that that was the biggest part of this. I thought we had the right person.
And I didn't say that.
Yeah, and then the second part of that is, uh, community development uh, didn't exist. Uh, that's, that's something that I have created many, many years. So it's very important to me. And so I'm glad it's standing important to the board, the community board. So I, I'm, I'm going to hope we can maintain this, that it is because. The pieces of the race can develop with things that I would have gone before I came in.
Well, I'm letting hope, I'm letting it down. I want to hope it's done.
Okay, yeah.
We, we want to make sure that they both continue, uh, without very little interruption. Because it's a mayor of Tim State. We have seen these splits before. And they'll plow my face. So, uh, it'd be helpful that they do work. That they do make sure that they both work.
The previous, uh, excuse me, the previous times we had restructured. Some of the departments, we have to also realize too, that was under different leadership in the town halls. So, and we had new leadership to, we have new town manager, Karen, in the end of the way. Well, we can't apply that same principle as if they're going to make same.
Reason to be concerned.
There's nothing wrong with being vigilant, but we can't assume that they're going to make them say.
I said that at all, but you have to understand that we are now working with, and I'm glad you brought that point out. With less experience in different roles. All right, any new business? Presentation. Presentations. Managers report.
Right, two losses there. One, the monthly time report, John, our finest bridge for body of process on your uh. During the day, also state what is the uh, management for calendar hours going up to calendar events going to come up for our next meeting. Uh, August twenty-sixth, we're going to have the hardball judges of the New York identification with the corporate here. At twelve thirty, and on the twenty-eighth, we have a super stakeholder meeting here in City Hall at eight o'clock.
Yeah.
Our next meeting will be set to fifteen.
Thank you so much. And and those that, I, in the, let me ask you about the um. On the Joe Book, there were um, two piece invitation only open to a public house at. Yes.
Jack, I appreciate the uh, part of the report. That was good.
Thanks, sir.
I have, uh, one, and Jack, I've shared it with you a little bit before the meeting. Um, but now I see that we have two fall events. One at six P M. On eighteenth, the uh, Main Street kickoff. And then our celebration of the twentieth. Uh, and I think, you know, these are particularly the celebration of the twentieth is a big fall event. We're not only town. All of it, but it's nice to have the one on Tuesday, Thursday evening as well. To my concern is that we're done with all the repairs, the pipes. Uh, I'd like to see if we can get a a hard timeline. I know that there's problems that were of no fault of their own, and they're doing their best to get it fixed. But I really would like a tight timeline, only thirty days out. And it's been going rolling for sixty days. Over sixty days. So let's see if we can get a tight timeline. Uh, because they gotta be done, because we gotta set up and we gotta get ready for our fall events.
I'll follow up with you on that with any timelines.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, so Chatham Avenue is basically like a amusement right now. So they're going to teach your plants to just move that out. Move that fall on.
So this, um, that brings up another issue, Jack. You know, Raleigh Street was repaid nice and smooth. And now we've got, um, it's a little bit more adventurous on Raleigh Street, so just. When are we in the cycle for D O T. To come back now to repay their loans or or is it? Because this is the first time I've been here since ninety-six, and this is the first time that they paid their boats. So I'm concerned that you're stuck with the condition it's in for the next thirty years. Is it ninety-six to twenty, twenty-four, twenty-eight years? That I've been here fully at page. So are we stuck with that condition the way it is for twenty-eight more years?
I'll check with D O T. And try to remember about their scans running on their.
And Chatham's worse, Chatham Avenue is worse than Ron.
But then there's something happening. And they have permission from somebody to dig it up. Like D O T. There gotta be some kind of agreement.
We, we can make some calls tomorrow and get some timelines. Uh, Mr. Johnson, Ben Johnson, who's an engineer. Normally checks in on Friday, because we've been kind of hard on him opening these streets. So we can have uh, uh, traffic going through. And um, because it did hurt a couple of businesses, several businesses when they had uh, that went closed. And so we got right on it. And so now he calls on Friday to see how the week went. And if everything's good. And they have assured that these roads, the streets would be open at a certain time. So we can also check about the repaving. Um, because I put in a call to them also this morning about some uh, sewage waste in uh, residents' yards. So they're easy to get to and you don't mind answering our questions. And I I do find that favorable and they're. So we have established that relationship. So those, those uh, between Jack and Michelle will have those answers. To be able to share.
Yeah, I'm related now. The Beaver Street parcel, where are we on getting gravel on that parcel?
So I was going to be doing the after, uh, rivers complete downtown. They're currently using that as a staging area for some of their footwork. As long as they get cleared out, we're like, start.
Most of town staff is actually going to do that. Yep, just by the goal. Awesome.
Hopefully, they will undertake, thank the uh, police chief, the fire chief, staff. Uh, we had a group of kids come through the other day. And from what I understand, they went home and before they could go to bed, they were still talking about. They got badges, they got stickers, they got some of everything. And it was just a great day. About ten of them came through and just viewed City Hall. Uh, the biggest chief, the biggest uh, drunk, Jim Reagan, they wanted to know where the bad guys were. I could not give, everybody wants to know where you put the bad guy. So you're going to have to get in jail some hours. But I do want to thank the guys for uh, entertaining these young people and being prepared and having a little gift for them. They really enjoyed themselves. So it was a great day. And that's all I have.